It wasn't, it never quite.
Indoors, yeah.
And the lady next to us ordered stuff.
Usually, if she starts in July, typically she'll get her year with boards in.
And then on top of that.
Maybe May and Atlanta.
She then came back.
Oh, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's March thirteenth. It's 5:30 PM. We're calling the meeting to order. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are up to roll call.
Councilmember Rissman.
Present.
Councilmember Mackin.
Present.
Like Councilmember Johnson is absent. Councilmember Knack.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Here.
Councilmember Petskull.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Mayor Proten Hazelick.
Here.
I would entertain a motion to excuse Mayor Kramer and Chad Johnson.
So moved. Support?
Motion with support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Thank you. We are now up to public comments. There's a public comment now and at the end of the meeting. Is there anyone right now that would like to do a public comment?
Thank you, members of council who came tonight. I want to introduce our newest police officer to you. Her name is Molly Byer. She comes to us from Battle Creek. She worked for Battle Creek PD for about three years, a little over three years. She's going to be filling in, doing some part-time work, mostly in the night shift with us. She's very excited about the opportunity to come down and work with us. We're glad to have her aboard. If anybody has any questions of her, she will try to answer the best she can.
Hello.
Just a little bit about yourself. Just have her, a little bit about.
You're going to talk a little bit about yourself.
I know. Put you on the spot.
Just wanted to. Not really too much to tell. I have a family, a husband and a daughter. I enjoy doing this job and I just want to have a chance to do it within the hours I can work, even though I do have a daughter that I have to work with, with my schedule. So I'm very happy to be here and I enjoy, I've been enjoying working for the city so far. So it's all, all been really nice.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, greetings, everybody. My name is Michael Reen. For those of you who don't know me, I know several of you. I'm here on behalf of the North Chain Lake Association Board. We, so there are seven people on the board and we've all, through various means and methods, to varying degrees, have become aware of the Rotary Park project. And wanted to just come and just share a few concerns that we have or that some people have. There's a, quite a variety of concerns on on the, on the topic, on a few different things. I've sent a letter to Keith to distribute to all of you. And I'd like to offer any, any, we're happy to elaborate or help you clarify what our concerns are and some of the things. We have, just very briefly, I'll try and be conscious of the time. We have a few concerns about the rental slips from a keyholing aspect, which keyholing is just when people that don't have property on the lake are somehow managed to get boat access or not boat access, but like dock access, I guess is what I'm talking about. And that's something that is, is something you want to be very careful about. Opening up a slippery slope is the concern. Girard Township just shut that down and it's just something to be concerned, cognizant of. I personally don't think it's a problem, but you know. I'm not the whole board. We, there, some members of the board also had some issues with the, the potential for impact on the cemetery operations. And then one of the ones that's very related to that too is traffic. The, the, just the location on the west side of the river down there, traffic coming eastbound from, from the Brunson direction. Traffic coming eastbound through there can be going quite fast and you don't always have the best sightlines through there. And so people were concerned about that as well. And then, so those are our two kind of, hey, make sure you give it, you know, good, good thought kind of things on this. And then the third thing that we have, we, we have, it's really a different concern. We've been working for years trying to get a permanent boat wash station at one of the access locations on the lake. There's only three access locations, I think, public access, to help to spread of invasive species. And we would love to see something like that in the final, in the final plan. I understand there are, there are some preliminary plans for that, but you know, until it's all done, it's not done right. But those are, those are the things that we have concerns over. Like I said, you have a letter coming that kind of breaks them down a little more in depth. And any of the board members would be happy to help you out. My name, my name and contact information, I think, is in the, in the letter. And you can reach out to me and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight you're going to look at, I think, voting on a resolution to let us do Walk a Mile down on Monroe Street again this year. This is our thirteenth year of Walk a Mile. And it is coming strong. We have a lot of sponsors already and I can see a lot of walkers right here, I'm sure. But we really just wanted to talk about the date of the event, April 29th, always the last Saturday, and we're excited to do that. But the other thing I wanted to share is our Child Advocacy Center is up and running. A while ago, we had come and talked to you about when we were going to build a new building and needed some funds. It was $693,000 that we came and approached the city about helping with a portion of that. And we actually had the Hope Network Building come up for sale across the street from us and we got that for $494,000. We have actually, we're down to now, after the roof sit this week, down to $165,000 left on our mortgage. So we are, are serving children in our county and actually still getting close to paying that off. So we are having an event coming up on May 4th. May the 4th be with you and it'll give a little more information. We'll have an auction and we hope that you all can attend.
All right. Thank you. We are up to the consent agenda. The items listed in the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and city manager and will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless requested by a council member or citizen. In this event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and the council action will be taken separately on said item. Those items so approved under the heading Consent Agenda will appear in the council minutes in their proper form. Today's consent agenda includes the city council regular minutes of February 27th, 2023, Coldwater Public Library Advisory Board Regular Minutes of February 6th, 2023, Planning Commission Regular Minutes of December 5th, 2022, Recreation Board Regular Minutes of January 4th, 2023, Board of Public Utilities Regular Minutes of February 1st, 2023, Michigan South Central Power Agency Board Regular Minutes of January 5th, 2023, Board of Public Utilities Reports of Financial Statements for January 2023, City of Coldwater Monthly Financial Report for January 2023, and the Rec Department Spring/Summer Activity Guide from 2023. Is there anyone in the public who would like any of these items taken out? Seeing none, is there anybody at council level who would like something removed? I would entertain a motion.
Motion. Support?
Motion with support to accept the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Thank you. We are up to bills and accounts. And of course, the bills and accounts are in your packet. Any questions? Concerns? Tom is here, wearing purple, like he should. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Support. Motion with support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Motion carries. Thank you. We are up to the city manager's report. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor. Council, good evening, everyone. So the Coldwater Area Chamber of Commerce held their annual awards banquet last Thursday night. And there were quite a bit of representation by the city. And so we wanted to recognize the business of the year. They were recognized, the Coldwater Board of Public Utilities was recognized as the business of the year. And our own, very own Audrey Tampadon, our Economic Development Coordinator, was recognized as Young Professional of the Year. And I wasn't aware of it at the time that I wrote this last week, but then one of our council members, Mr. Beckwith, was recognized as Citizen of the Year. So congratulations to all of them as, as duly awarded. We'd also like to recognize firefighter Andrew Pollan for his five-year anniversary. Firefighter Pollan has a degree from Spring Arbor and is trained in confined space and high-angle rescue, among other specialties. And we'd like to thank him for his continued dedication and commitment to the community and service in the fire department. Relative to spring recreation programs, as you just approved within the consent agenda, the Recreation Department's Spring and Summer Activity Guide is now out. And when Director Julie Santour sent me the list of things of which to promote, I just put them under the men's, women's, and youth spring leagues and programs because there are just so many. So we recommend people take a look at the activity guide, find an activity that interests them and to participate and register. And the registration information is available there in the activity guide and on the city's website. In addition to all the various leagues and spring events, we also have the two festivals that we're taking registrations for, for vendors, and that's the Strawberry Fest in June and Apple Fest in September. Those registrations are open and interested parties can register for those as well. We're always looking for new vendors to expand those events. Just a couple reminders. In spite of the recent snow, spring is on the way. I believe we're about a week from officially arriving. We've just experienced the, the change in daylight savings time. And so just want to remind residents that they can bag their yard waste or we'll, we'll begin in earnest, the collection of yard waste of the first week of April, Monday, April 3rd. And then we've already, we've already begun brush pickup as a result of the recent ice storm. But there, the crews continue to pick up brush. So if yours hasn't been picked up yet, they will be doing so here for the remainder of the month as, as time and opportunity present itself. One other spring-related and property maintenance-related reminder is that front yard parking is not permitted. That's one of the things that we have been concentrating on with the police department and code enforcement. So we would just recognize, want to recommend and remind people not to do that. And they're subject to a ticket and fine if doing so. And then you all made it here. So even though our clocks in the room haven't been moved, at the time of writing, we're just trying to remind everybody about the light savings time. So with that, that's my report.
Excellent. Any questions for Keith?
No, I'd just like to say kudos to the city for updating the website. I think it's much more user-friendly than before. So pass that on to whoever needs to hear that.
And it looks, and it looks a lot nicer too. It's very pleasant to look at.
It's spruced up. I know within, with our program, host site that, that's done every about three years, I believe.
Any other questions for Keith? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion. Support?
Thank you. We have a motion with support on the city manager's report. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Thank you. We are up to a letter from Keith, the city manager regarding proposed closure of South Monroe Street on April 29th from 6:00 AM till noon on the 13th Annual Walk a Mile in Their Shoes Event. And there's an adoption of a resolution. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor. Much like last year, this is a request. As you just heard Kim explain the nature of the event that day, and this would authorize the closure of the street for that event to take place. It will be between US 12 and Pearl Street from the hours of 6:00 AM to 12, 12:00 PM on Saturday, April 29th.
Move to approve Resolution Number 2321.
Support. Motion with support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, a memo from Paul CBPU Director regarding AMP Board Rep Presentation Consider Adoption Resolution Number 2313. Paul's here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proten, members of the council. In September of this year, the MSCPA and the Michigan group that belonged to AMP had held an election for the AMP board seat, which is a three-year term. At that point in that term, they, they elected Coldwater to be go ahead and have that AMP seat as well. So part of our responsibility is to choose a primary and an alternate for the AMP board seat. In the past, it's always been the utility director and the utility director would normally have the engineering manager or another representative from Coldwater be that alternate on the AMP board seat. This year at MSCPA, we discussed about making sure we have diversity amongst its members. And it was recommended that we go ahead and even though Coldwater has the primary seat, to go ahead and allow another utility in Michigan to have that alternate board seat. So with that, we decided that Coldwater would still hold the primary seat and that we'd allow the city of Marshall to go ahead and appoint someone as that alternate seat, just to make sure that we have that diversity. The only time that the alternate would have any kind of say on the AMP board was if the primary contact for Coldwater is either not able to attend in person or virtually, which to my knowledge has never happened. So right now it's just as an alternate going forward. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I'd ask for approval of Resolution 23-13 to rename the CBPU Utility Director as a primary AMP board seat member and also to allow the city of Marshall to appoint an alternate for the alternate board seat.
All right, questions for Paul?
Just to add, this was approved by the Board of Directors for the CBPU also.
Okay.
Paul came here.
Anything else? I would entertain a motion.
Motion to consider adoption of Resolution 23-13.
Support. Thank you. Thank you. Motion with support. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, stay right there. Regarding the proposed power sales contract and supplemental agreement with the American Municipal Power Regarding RICE Peaking Project. What do you have?
What do I have? Well, at our February board meeting, CBPU Board approved the up to seven and a half megawatts of diesel-fired generation to be installed over at the old power plant to go to the Bennett Street substation. Part of this has to do with our responsibilities to make sure we've got capacity, energy, and renewable energy credits for our power supply mix to make sure that we can keep the lights on. As when we decided to eliminate Project Five, which was the combustion turbine to be located up on Jonesville Road, we found ourselves short. So this was a solution to be able to pick up some of that shortage now. And there'll be some more in the future as we move forward with that. So what we were asking for is approval to enter into power sales contract and supplemental agreement with AMP for seven, up to seven and a half megawatts of capacity for the Michigan Rice Peaking project to be installed over at Bennett Street. So in addition to that, one of the reasons, I forgot to mention this, one of the reasons we're doing Bennett Street is because if we do lose all three of our transmission feeds, we'll be able to at least feed most of the downtown area, which includes police, fire, this building, and some of the other emergency operations centers that we have. CBPU Board, AMP, and MSCPA have all finalized the agreements and now it needs to come to city council for final approval. So I'm requesting a final approval for city council for Resolution 23-19 and Agreement Number 823-07 to enter into these agreements for up to 7.5 megawatts of power from the Michigan Rice Peaking Project. And I do can tell you what Rice stands for because I had to Google it. I thought it was right. Reciprocating internal combustion engines, just in case you were wondering.
Any questions for Paul?
I have one question, Paul. Is that going to be direct wired into that circuit for the downtown district? And what I mean is, in the event that power went out in a different area of town and it was going to be a substantial amount of time for repair, but, but the downtown is not affected, would we be able to direct that power source to that, to a different area of town?
With a lot of switching, yes. We're also looking at some other options as well, too, to make sure that we've got diversification throughout the city to be able to turn on power, to be able to, to power up some of those primary features. So the reason that we chose this is, one, also the hospital is on the substation. So that'll pick up that as well as police, fire, the downtown, be able to get some traffic lights up as we move forward. And as, as we need it to, we can do some switching internally. Will we be able to power everyone with that seven and a half megawatts? No.
Right.
But at least give us a good start.
Thank you.
Paul, I have one question and it, it is just a curiosity kind of question. Why is Hillsdale doing two seven and a half megawatt items and we're only doing one? I mean, I, I'm just curious about that.
So, so Marshall is in need of a little bit more. And Marshall's actually not being part of this project. They have voted not to go through with the diesel side of it. They're looking at some natural gas options as well, too. One of the reasons we looked at this size is for diversification. We don't want to keep all of our eggs in one basket. The other thing is looking at these, these are more going to be for the capacity side of the business. So we don't have to buy capacity down the market, which right now is very expensive. Marshall, it pulled out of their 15 megawatts that they had. Clinton pulled out their three megawatts. They're all looking at natural gas, hoping that the prices are the same. We're looking at the same thing with the potential in the future to be able to throw in some natural gas units as well. Hillsdale, on the other hand, they went ahead and moved forward with their complete 15 megawatts. Now, a lot of those other cities, Hillsdale, Marshall, and Clinton are all looking at it from a reliability standpoint. Do they have a lot of issues with transmission coming in, Clinton in, in particular? So they dropped the transmission side. You're looking at the entire city down for 44, 36, 48 hours. We're lucky where we have three separate sources coming in. But if we ever did drop all three of those sources, we're trying to make sure that we have the capability to supply as much as we can to our, our residents.
Thank you.
Paul, you said this was diesel. What kind of diesel storage? How long can it run? Obviously you can refill tanks, but I wondered what you're set up for.
I believe they're set up for 18 to 24-hour runtime. And then we'd have to bring in tankers to fill those up as well.
We discussed turbines before, the natural gas turbines. And it might have been before you. I don't.
There was, and that, this is one of the reasons why we have to backfill into this project. It was going to be a 50-megawatt combustion cycle engine up on Jonesville. The issue is that the price of everything went up by over 35%, which made it not real practical for us to move forward with the project. And we're, we're continuing to look at that. We're possibly be looking at some type of what they call an integrated resource plan to look in the future to see what is going to be the best option for Coldwater moving forward to make sure that we have the capacity and energy to supply to our customers.
Any other questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Support?
Motion with support on the resolution and the agreement. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Next up, letter from Keith Baker regarding proposed grant application for Rotary Park Improvement. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor. The simple request is for the setting of a public hearing, which would take place at our next meeting on March 27th, to give an overview and take public comment on the proposed submission of a grant application to help support the proposed relocation and redevelopment of a public boat launch at what we're calling the west side of Rotary Park. For purposes of the grant application, that's why you see Rotary Park West Side Improvement Project. So that's what's before you is a resolution to set the next, set the next meeting as a public hearing. But what I thought I would do too is give just a little bit of an overview in anticipation of that. This is for the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. You could apply for up to $300,000. Once you meet that 50% match requirement, you don't get any additional points towards that. So in looking at the. So in looking at the overall project that the council has been considering up to this point, it's approximately just over a million-dollar project. And so the application will, I just wanted to identify the fact that the application will, for the grant portion of this project, will just cover the boat launch and the immediate area for that. If you could bring up a drawing, a second drawing of that. And this gives an overview of the entire project that you've seen previously during our work sessions, but then the, you can leave it right there. Thank you. This gives a zoomed-in version of the west side of the river that identifies the new parking area as proposed, the boat launch, the relocated kayak launch, the proposed boat slips and parking for that adjacent to the cemetery maintenance facility on the west, what we're calling the west side of Rotary Park, on the opposite side of the channel, which is located currently. So wanted to make sure that the public is aware that as we're contemplating this project and looking for your support at the next meeting to submit the application, that it would be submitted in that form, so, and we would do so purposely because, as it was recommended to us, that if we, while we're looking at doing the entire project, we don't want the entire project subject to the state or federal grant requirements. So you have a breakdown of estimated costs for the project, just the boat launch, kayak, parking, and a proposed, we are looking at a proposed boat wash station as part of that. That in and of itself comes to $634,525, and so that's what we're going to apply for the grant for, the $300,000 towards that, with the city having the other $343,525 match. But recognizing that we would also be then using city funds for the boat slip and other parking improvements there. Just wanted to go over that, in as much as the application itself won't make reference to the boat slips, because what we're applying for is going to be specific to the maximum that we can get through the state and minimizing what influence that they would have if we were to get the grant on the rest of the project. So, is there any questions related to that? This is a design that's been discussed at the council level a couple of different times during our workshops. We are applying for the boat launch, kayak launch, relocation, parking, and affiliated amenities. And then if we were to obtain the grant, we would then piggyback the other improvements on that as part of the contract. There would be separate contracts, but we would pay for one with local funds and pay the other with grant funds and the match. Maybe that's clear as mud, but wanted to give an overview of the nature of the project so that persons who might be viewing this meeting and wanting to comment on it over the next two weeks prior to the next meeting would have an overview of the nature of what requests we're going to be making. And as referenced, the public comments earlier, I did receive that letter and will be today, and we'll be circulating that to all the council members in anticipation for our public hearing. So back to my first comment, is it's really just a request to set a public hearing, but I wanted to give an overview of the nature of the project, what we're applying for, and the differentiation between the grant portion and what might be locally funded. Lastly, best-case scenario, this is due on April 1. If we're successful, we'll find out later this fall, and the project would be constructed begin this time next year.
Move to approve the public hearing for March 27.
Court. Thank you. We have motion with support to set the public hearing for March 27. Any other discussion?
I have one question that relates to this. Since we are going ahead with this project, is there any way to have a discussion with MDOT again about the potential of widening US 12 from the bridge out to like either River Road or Benquet Road to make it a three-lane so that you've got a turn lane in there, because, you know, if boats are coming in with or going out with pontoon boats, it's going to go relatively slow. That is a, people do drive pretty quickly through there. So it's the kind of thing that, I don't know if MDOT would look more favorably upon the idea because we are going ahead with this project.
We did discuss that with them. They are aware of the project. It sounds a little counterintuitive, but part of their response was, well, if if an issue arises, that would help the justification, which then would drive them towards looking at doing something, but until you have that in place. And the project that they're going to be working on this summer for the rehabilitation of the bridge and the repaving of that section essentially from the entrance drive that were of the cemetery west or east towards Western Avenue is already set, so they didn't want to, they didn't want to change their plans for the work that they're proposing, planning to do this summer, and then would look at it if the need arise based on the traffic or issues that might arise in the event that this gets built.
Okay. I did have one question, just for information's sake. The North Chain of Lakes Association, is that, are those city residents or a mix? Or are they all township?
They're a mix. I know that they're represented. We have members that live on the lake, or residents that live on the lake that are, I know that are part of that association, so I know that's eligible to anyone that fronts the lakes, right? So we are, we actually get assessed as part of, as part of the Lake Board, because we have fronted, the city itself has frontage, so.
Any other questions? We have motion with support. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carries. Thank you. We are up to a letter from Keith Baker regarding MDOT Annual Millage Report, and there's a resolution. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor and council. So this is an annual exercise. Some years, there are no changes, and we just ask you to adopt it as is. Some year, there are additions to our road system, like with the extension of Thompson Boulevard or when Fisk was extended upon the construction of Clemens, the Clemens Project. This year, we have two recisions, or we're reducing the amount of lineal footage of road that we would be credited for, and those are as a result of a couple of projects and actions that you've already taken relative to the vacation or abandonment. One being on the south end of Allen Avenue in the industrial park to facilitate the Voltec industrial expansion. So that portion of the road would be vacated for the purposes of the Act 51 calculation. And with the proposed improvements to Waterworks Park and the closure of the drive that used to exist and the intent to turn that into a walking path, we're taking that off of the Act 51 formula. And so those would be the two map changes that are proposed as part of this Resolution 2305 and would minimally impact our Act 51 funds. But because those sections of roadway will no longer be accessible to vehicles, then they have to be removed for that calculation.
Questions for Keith? If not, what's your pleasure?
Motion to consider adoption of Resolution Number 23-05. Support.
Thank you. We have motion with support. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carries. Thank you. We are up to, this seems to happen a lot, a letter from Keith Baker, city manager regarding proposed fire protection agreement with Gerard Township. Keith?
Definitely a lot of action items on tonight's agenda. The next one being our proposed extension of a five-year contract with Gerard Township to provide fire and emergency services protection to the township. This would be a renewal of a previously existing contract. The discussion at this point has been for a flat rate of $60,000 per year, which is just a little bit above what their current year payment is, that there would be a 3% annual increase for any contract extensions, that there would be the transfer of Gerard Township's 40% ownership in what we call, quote-unquote, "the township tanker" to the city of Coldwater, so we would realize the residual value of that. That's similar to what Coldwater Township did in our adoption of their agreement. They transferred their, in that case, 60% ownership to the city. And there again, this would be for a term of five years. We negotiated, their concerns were budget stability, wanting to make sure that they could fit it within their budget and have reliability as to what that amount would be on an annual basis. We were looking for, wanting to ultimately remove this joint ownership of this tanker that we didn't necessarily have control over. And so now with these two agreements with the townships, we'll have accomplished that. That particular apparatus will remain in service for as long as it's, has a useful life and doesn't become a maintenance issue. And so with that, the numbers, $60,000 per year equates to about half of what the Coldwater Township contract is for. And that is similar to the differences in population between Coldwater Township and Gerard Township. It's, and the number of runs that we encounter for Gerard Township versus Coldwater Township. So we thought that there was an equitable distribution there between those two rates. And we seek your approval of Resolution 2318 and Agreement Number 2301. Gerard Township has acted upon and approved this. They get cost certainty over that five-year period. They get, they'll no longer incur the cost of the the fuel and maintenance of that particular vehicle. We gain the value of the vehicle for its remaining useful life, and it's consistent with our contract with Coldwater Township. So it's secure, recommending council consideration of approval of the resolution and agreement.
Questions?
Yes. So we're realizing the value of it, but are we also realizing the replacement of it? It's what year? Was that like a '94 or something?
Correct. '93, correct.
'93. So if this needs, I mean, we've just spent how much money on fire trucks? I'm just wondering, in another two or three years, are we going to spend another $1 million on a tanker truck?
No, in discussions with Chief Schmaltz. So this ultimately would go away, that we would incorporate its function with other apparatuses to replace, like the new one we have under border. So ultimately, it would be a net reduction of one. We're not looking at replacing it.
The same with, because when they get this old, what we've been running into is the expense of maintaining them. That's what we kept hearing about over and over and over again. And our trucks weren't really this old, the ones that we replaced weren't even this old, I don't think.
No, but the other ones, the ones that we are replacing, and as they get older, as you replace them, the older ones are put in reserve. But this one isn't used nearly as frequently, because it goes out on the township calls. And I can ask Chief Schmaltz to come up here to maybe answer more detailed questions, but.
I think that answers it. You're saying that if it gets too expensive to maintain, we're just going to mothball it, either for reserve or get rid of it.
Right. Once its useful life is done, then it would just go away entirely.
That answers it. Sorry.
Other questions? Concerns? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion.
Support.
Motion with support. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carries. Thank you. We are up to a letter from Keith Baker, city manager regarding the Fourth of July fireworks. Keith?
All right. For those that have been on the council for many years, you might recognize this. The Coldwater Township Sunrise Rotary and the Coldwater Noon Club, formerly Coldwater Noon Rotary, have promoted the annual fireworks display and raised money on an annual basis to cover the cost of said display, and have handled the contract and liability coverage with the Pyrotechnics Company that we utilize to put on the display. So with Coldwater Noon's affiliation with Rotary International ceasing and with the Coldwater Sunrise Rotary Club's affiliation with the Rotary International not seeking to incur that additional liability, the city was approached with taking back the, essentially the organization of the fireworks on an annual basis and entering into the contract with the Pyrotechnics Company for this coming year. The Coldwater Noon Club and the Coldwater Township Sunrise Rotary Club would continue to support the funding of the fireworks through their individual contributions. And there has been in the past additional fundraising activities, but they recognize a potential shortfall for this coming year, and are also asking, in addition to the city taking on the contract with the Pyrotechnics Company, to also contribute $5,000 towards, up to $5,000 towards the display. So with that, what you have before you is consideration of a resolution that would adopt the contract with Pyrotechnico Fireworks Incorporated to perform the display on July 4, and also to authorize a contribution of $5,000 towards the expense of the display. We have traditionally, annually, participated in all of the various logistics of the project or of the event between the police department, the fire department, municipal services in putting on the event. It's obviously hosted at Heritage Park, and in discussion with the city's liability insurance carrier. There really is no additional exposure. We already have coverage for this event. We're just named as the, we would just be named on the contract versus the prior arrangement. We would seek, each one of those entities has to be, the city has to be additional insured with those entities, but otherwise, from an insurance liability standpoint, I was reassured that it's really no difference from the current arrangement. So with that, not wanting to have to be the one to say no to fireworks, brought forward to you the request to enter in the agreement, contribute $5,000 towards it, and look to schedule the fireworks for July 4 again this year.
Questions? Concerns? I just was doing some simple math. The total amount is $20,000. The Rotary's given $5,000, the Noon Club's given $5,000, we're given $5,000. Does that mean it's really $15,000?
The contract is for $20,000. There is another entity that contributes annually, but I didn't want to commit them to that yet.
Okay.
So they have yet to approve that for this year.
Okay.
Otherwise, there would be some additional fundraising, as has been done in the past, but yes, your math is correct.
Okay. Any other thoughts? If not, I'd entertain a motion. So moved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any other discussion?
I have a question. As a member of the Sunrise Rotary, do I need to abstain or just make known that I am a member of the organization?
member of the organization?
All right, we have motion with support. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Thank you. We are now up to public comments. Is there anybody in the public who would like to come to the podium and have a comment? Seeing none, is there any unfinished business at the council level? Any new business? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.